Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Otomo City Council meeting. I'm going to call our meeting to order, and if everybody would rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember Hull.
Here.
Councilmember Pope. Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Mayor Johnson. Here. The next item is our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's city council meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is administrators' report to council and citizens. I'll turn it over to Mr. Rath.
You know, I don't have anything specific under this, but I'll be talking in just a moment under the public hearing about the budget for next year.
Okay. The next item is where I ask if anybody has any agenda items that they would like to talk about at our council meeting tonight. We do have one individual that's indicated they want to speak, so when we get to that section, you can come forward. But is there anybody else that would like to speak on any of our agenda items tonight? Okay. We'll go ahead and move to public hearings.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposed adoption of the 2023-2024 annual budget for the city of Otomo, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Phil Rath is going to cover this.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and I believe we've got PowerPoint coming up here. All right, so I handed out the sheet, it'll be the slides for you here, it doesn't have this first slide, but the other, the next few are on there for you if you want to follow along, take any notes as you go. And then the benefit of the slides is for those in the audience and anyone at home later wanting to take a look at this. So in general, and I kind of covered this at the work session, but for, for the public, you know, the main purpose of a budget, it's a planning document. You know, we're challenged always with looking at providing resources to meet any legal, any mandated, any statutory obligations. Examples of these are public safety, like building inspections, elections, you know, some of those things from the big to the ones that don't happen as often, like the elections, which we'll have one of those coming up this fall. And then matching resources to meet the needs and goals of the community, you know, some things that, again, it's like the wants and the needs, so park system, trails, economic development, things like a website so people can access government around the clock. Those are some things that we look at, and so when addressing that, my personal perspective, I try to, and work with staff on maintaining our current service levels, limiting any negative impact of reduced or eliminated services, should that be necessary, limiting the impact upon any current employees, and then encouraging growth and increased valuation. So, next slide. And so also continuing on with this, like I said, we look to balance the required services with our desired services. We only have so many dollars that come in, and whether that's through taxes, charges for services, fees, whatever that might be, we need to balance all of that and make sure that we're able to provide the desired services for the community. Also ensuring that we have stable internal or administrative support to provide those services. We have adequate finance department for processing payments, for taking revenues in, HR, general administration, clerk's office to handle meetings like this and public records requests, and helping communication with the public. All of that is necessary to help support our, the things that people see every day, the fire trucks, the police on the streets, the streets themselves, and the snow plowing. And then finally, trying to link that budget to what our guiding principles are for the comprehensive plan. And there were four primary principles that we had identified a couple of years ago as we worked through this for the next 20 years, and that is housing, quality of life, growth, and celebrating diversity. So making sure that our budget document, that plan, is linking with those core elements of our larger 20-year plan. Along with that, we, we look to try to, this year at least, we talked about it starting last year, was looking at trying to increase some of the services that we have, the positions that we had lost over years, and, and work that in. A couple of those positions that we're looking to add this year through this budget is a facilities maintenance manager, someone to address the various buildings that we have throughout the city, whether that's this building, the library, the depot that was purchased last year, or this current year, you know, buildings that we have throughout the city. Adding another housing code enforcement inspector, adding a human resources generalist, info tech technician, some of these departments, we have one, a department of one or one and a half people. Adding another parks utility worker later in the year, a planner, and a public information officer. Those are some of the positions that were identified last year and looking to proceed with that. Next slide. So along with that, when we look at this, we've got several levies, and we're responsible for fund management. One of the big ones that gets talked about is the general fund levy. Sometimes people refer that, refer to that as the $8, or the $8.10, $8.10, that is the maximum we have, and there's a number of services that go into that. This is just kind of a graphical look at what, what makes up that $8.10. So we have, out of our levy, I'm sorry, this is, this is actually all the levies, the taxes that we have, general fund is the bluish one in the lower left-hand corner, that's the general fund levy, the $8.10. That makes up 38% of, of the levy that we have. Then you have the event center, emergency, library, the insurance fund, which went up a little bit to about 4% this year, the debt service at, I think, 21, and then that reddish one, that other, that is our trust and agency, that makes up about a third there as well, and that is further broken down into the police and fire retirement, FICA and IPRs, or other retirement, and then the other employee benefits. That might be health insurance, various insurances, and other benefits there. So that is what makes up all of the dollars that go into the tax levy. Let's go to the next slide. So talking about fund accounting, you just mentioned the general fund, the $8.10, and that pays for like police, fire, public works, engineering, parks, a variety of other general administration, a lot of categories that we have, including transfers, a budget of $19.2 million. Special revenue funds includes things like the road use tax fund, employee benefits, the emergency fund, local option sales and service tax, that is about $20.8 million. Many of those in that fund, money comes in, it gets transferred out to the various other funds across the city, you know, like capital projects, things to that effect. Our local option sales and service tax, we're estimating about $4.5 million, 10% goes back to the general fund to help offset the, the property taxes, the remaining 90% is split into streets and sewers, basically goes into those capital projects. Proprietary funds, those are going to be like your water pollution control, and, and then your other categories, $13.8 million, that's your TIF special revenue funds, debt service, capital, and permanent funds. Permanent funds are ones like the cemetery memorial fund, that's like a trust. Overall, the total budget, including internal transfers, we're looking at $62,621,622. All right, and next slide. So to make up that $62 million, here's a quick look at revenues by percentage. So this is for the total budget. I can see about a third, 33% of that is from the general property tax, and those are taxes that are going to general fund, to trust and agency, to all those various ones I'd mentioned a little bit ago. When you include the TIF revenue, dollars that come off the top for taxes, and other city taxes, such as local option sales tax, and, and things like that, you can see it's about 50% of our revenue for services is coming from taxes. And that, that is all the different things that we want to do as a city, from law enforcement to having park staff and the beach, all of that, 50% of our revenue is coming in from various taxes. The next largest amount is that darker blue on the left, that is 38.9, or just about 39%, that is fees for charges, or charges for fees and services, and then the remaining is 11%, and that includes license and permits, intergovernmental charges, interest that we get from money, and any miscellaneous revenue. So you can see, like, if we're talking about increasing charges for services, let's say we're talking about the beach, Beach of Otomo, and someone says, well, just increase the fee. Well, overall, in our total grand scheme of the budget, it's a very small percentage for fees and everything else that we get. So one of the biggest areas that we get that revenue from, as you can see, is from, from taxes. So that's a, one of the takeaways, I think, everyone, if I can get everybody to remember that, the taxes that we, that are charged, help pay for all the services that are provided within the city. Next slide. Overall, I am happy to report that we essentially held the line. We did lower the year-over-year levy by just under two cents, it's like 1.895 cents. But in a year where I think we saw revenue decrease, I think we lost about $300,000 in tax revenue coming in, and as I mentioned, that's about 50% of our overall revenue, and the cost of everything going up due to inflationary costs and everything else, for us to even hold the line, I think was, was quite an achievement. And part of that is due in part to the franchise fees that were enacted earlier this year. So that allowed us to be able to kind of hold the line on this, but also look ahead and, and expand in some areas for some services that we're desperately trying to provide. So again, the big takeaway, looking ahead, we're looking at lowering the levy by just under two cents. And I'm also hoping, if you're looking at the valuations that you see up there, we had a decrease from last year to this year. Part of that is due to the changes at the state and how evaluations are established. Part of that is due to a change in some TIF revenue that we're looking at, bringing in to make some payments. So I think we'll see some of that bounce back when we look ahead to next year. And that is all I had for you. You can leave that slide up if you want. That is what I had for, for my part of the public hearing.
Does council have any questions for Phil?
Just a couple. You're looking, I'm looking here at what was published in the newspaper for the budget, looking at the reestimated 23 versus the budget 24. You're looking at a net decrease on property taxes by about 7%. Is that due to the legislation that came through here recently?
I'd say about half of it is due to that, and the other half, we were anticipating due to, when we filed for the certifying for the urban renewal report and the tax increment financing, there were some payments that we're looking to make up from prior years that hadn't been certified. That changed some of that valuation, that kind of comes off the top, and then once we make those payments, we'll have that part bounce back.
Okay. And then on line 16, public safety, we're seeing about eight point, some change, increase in expenditures in that line item, as, and I know that only a couple percentage points of that would be attributable to salary allocation, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. We'd have some of that would be for salary benefits. We weren't adding any officers or individuals in that area, so most of that is, is due to, we'll say, more accurate accounting of the personnel costs.
So what was inaccurate about the personnel costs before? Because, I mean, that, if we're talking a couple of percentage points for natural increase in, in compensation, then that's still a pretty significant dollar volume swing.
Yeah, I would say before, it, it was going just off of prior year data, not necessarily off of what actual data was, and we're also looking at for any vacancies that were still out there, we look to budget for, not knowing if somebody coming in would take insurance, take family insurance, whatever else we budgeted for the higher-end family insurance, and made sure that that was calculated in there, and I don't know that that was always done in the past.
Did we have a lot of dark positions over the course of the year in the public safety departments? Because I understand what you're saying there.
There was one at least, and I think we had one or two that we were anticipating going ahead as well, into the next year, stated retirements and such.
I guess my last question is, is looking at the ending fund balance, reestimated 23 to budget 24, we're looking at about a 14 and a half percent reduction in the fund balance, is that of any concern?
Are you looking at the total overall, or are you looking at?
Yeah, line 31.
Yeah, yeah. So part of that is, if you remember when we, and this is looking at all of the funds across, so this includes capital, this includes, you know, debt service, all of those. We borrowed in for 23, 24, so I think 23 is going to be a little overstated in revenue, and some of those expenditures for capital specifically had not occurred, and, and will occur, anticipated to occur in 24. So those projects will be expensed in 24, and that's what a big chunk of that is, I would say it was about $3 million of that was anticipated in capital, that the expenditure was over revenue because we don't have, we're not rebonding for that, we already had the money come in, so it's sitting in the balance, and it'll be expended in 24, thereby lowering that, that fund.
So with that, it's 29.8 here, what's that estimate us at a coverage ratio?
I missed the last part of it.
What's that put us at an estimate of a coverage ratio?
So with this, and it wasn't looking at the, yeah, I'm sorry, it was, it was at the 20%, that lower end of what we're looking at. And again, when we looked at doing this, it was expending on the high side and estimating revenue on the lower side, so if we're at 20% at the lower end, I'm anticipating that we're hopefully around 20 and a half to 21% at the end of the, the year.
Okay, so looking forward one year, even if we drop the five, or three million, or whatever it was that you just said off of there as a one-time expense, looking at the next budget cycle, we cut that in half, we're still looking at another, all things being equal, seven, seven to nine percent reduction again in ending fund balance, which would cut our coverage ratio probably by three or four percentage points, is that going to be of any concern moving forward?
I don't foresee it. I, like I mentioned, that we should see the bounce back in the assessed valuation, which will then help increase the revenue on that side of things.
Any other questions from council?
I do. On line 21, general government, first, can you explain what general government is and talk about the significant increase from last year to this year?
Yeah. So general government is, that would make up administration, city clerk, HR, finance, info technology, and city hall maintenance, I believe all of those are all under that. The biggest part of that change is the additional positions that I was looking at, so the public information officer, adding in another support person for IT, and an HR generalist, that's, you know, three positions right there. And then we also had in here, paying for a new finance software program, and that was estimated to be, you know, probably about $200,000.
And then also on line 12, miscellaneous, can you talk about what miscellaneous means?
Let's see, so this is in revenue, yeah, miscellaneous, so miscellaneous revenues is going to be, a number of things, it could be grants, or things that we look to receive in, let's see, donations that we might receive, or other contributions, sale of equipment or other things that we don't otherwise anticipate, late fees, kind of just a general gamut of things that don't fit into taxes, don't fit into any of the other categories that you have there, they're not intergovernmental charges, they're not licensed or permits, so it's, we'll call it a catch-all for things, but primarily, or the biggest chunk of that is looking at like late payment fees, grants or donations, things to that effect.
Any other questions from council? Does anyone in the audience have any questions they'd like to ask, since this is a public If not, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Resolution number 49, 2023, adopting the 2023-2024 fiscal year annual budget for the city of Otomo, Iowa. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 49, 2023.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property located at 601 North Wapalo to Maria Reyes.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Zach, you're going to handle this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. These next two are disposing of property that the city acquired under Iowa Code 657A, where we take possession of abandoned property and try to put it in the hands of someone for redevelopment. The city accepted bids on both properties until 2:00 PM on March 22, 2023, for the property at 601 North Wapalo, four bids were submitted, and Maria Reyes submitted the best bid in the amount of $10,500, and staff recommends accepting her bid.
Does council have any questions for Zach? Does anyone in the audience have any questions that they'd like to ask? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Resolution number 51, 2023, accepting the offer and approving the sale of 601 North Wapalo, Wapalo County, Iowa, to Maria Reyes for the sum of $10,500. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 51, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property located at 701 West Fourth Street to Maria Reyes.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Zach, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second property where we took bids until 2:00 PM, March 22, 2023. For this property, two bids were submitted, and Maria Reyes had the best bid in the amount of $5,500, so staff also recommends accepting her bid.
Council have any questions for Zach? Does anyone in the audience have any questions they'd like to ask? If not, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
Resolution number 53, 2023, accepting the offer and approving the sale of 701 West Fourth Street, Wapalo County, Iowa, to Maria Reyes for the sum of $5,500. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 53, 2023.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull.
Yes.
Councilmember Pope.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with Asbury Manager LLC.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Zach, you're going to handle this one as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This resolution would approve a development agreement with Asbury Manager LLC, the entity that would do the project for 30 town home units at two locations here in Otomo. 20 units would be constructed at 13, or, yeah, 1321 Asbury, this property would be familiar from a conditional rezoning that we heard a few months ago. It's been an ongoing effort to get a development going here, and we're excited that the tax credits and the program has finally worked out. The second site is 10 additional town home units to be constructed at 1412 Sherwood. The advantage of this is first to access the scattered site advantage that comes with the Lytec Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, but also the Sherwood site has some potential for future development as well, which is really exciting to see that one brought in here. Both sites are in the Westgate Urban Renewal Area, and 100% of the units in the development would be available to low-to-moderate income families and tenants. The total cost for the construction of the minimum improvements, looked like we finally got the updated, the building permit and things, it's going to be about $7 million for the total cost for the project. They did receive a 9% low-income housing tax credit from the Iowa Finance Authority, and as local match for the program, the agreement would provide three economic development grants. On July 1, 2023, $62,000 would be paid to the developer, provided the construction has commenced. On January 1, 2024, an additional $62,000 would be paid if the developer has materially progressed on the project, and materially progressed is obviously a little bit fuzzy, but it's really difficult with the construction, the way things are, we can't really say we would see these particular items done, because we don't know which items would be available in which sequence, when materials will come in, those sorts of things, but it does at least give us the ability to say, well, progress is completely stalled, we're not going to make payments, and it gives us some additional leverage. Then on July 1, 2024, a final $62,000 grant would be paid if the minimum improvements are complete and certificates of occupancy have been issued for all 30 units. Staff has proposed funding the incentive using the franchise fees. After paying the grant incentive from the franchise fee fund, staff would then certify advancement of the funds as indebtedness suitable for repayment under the Westgate Urban Renewal Tax Increment Recovery, or, sorry, Tax Increment Revenue Fund, basically recovering the TIF revenue, putting it back and replenishing those franchise fees in order to have a source of revolving development funds within that program. Providing the incentive in cash rather than as a tax increment rebate, as we've done in other programs, has some advantages. We were able to do that in this case, first because we've got the franchise-free program, but also because the incentive is, compared to other projects, smaller. The reason the incentive is smaller is really because the room that we have to manipulate the taxable value is smaller with the Lytec program. The low-income housing tax credit projects that are built under that tax credit are not assessed in the same way as regular commercial residential real estate, so the assessment was always going to be lower than a market rate $7 million building. But because it was lower, and because we now have that franchise fee opportunity to be more flexible, we're able to make the, make our incentive in cash, which allows us to not have a portion of our incentive go toward paying for interest and financing, and each of our dollars can go directly into benefiting the project, which is going to be a great option as we continue to develop that sort of approach. The last thing I'll say is the development is consistent with the 2040 Otomo- Uh, the last thing I'll say is the development is consistent with the 2040 Atomo Housing, or I'm sorry, the 2040 Our Atoma Comprehensive Plan and the 2022 Atoma Housing Plan. Uh, these town home units would provide a unique housing product, which we don't really have, um, on the market in the form of the town home and in the form of the affordable, um, style town home. Uh, it will also encourage some further town home development, we hope, in the future. Uh, it also does provide, um, a needed number of units. We have, within that housing plan, a certain number of units that are needed for different income types, and we do have, um, a identified need for subsidized rental units. In Atomo, we also have, um, in the Housing Choice Voucher Program, a backlog, so there's obviously a demonstrated need for these types of units. Um, the developer, Ed Malloy, is here to, uh, also present a little bit about the project, and then we'll be able to take questions from council and the public.
Thank you, Zach. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. It's an honor to bring this project before you. I know there's been some, uh, discussion about this project in the past, but as was explained, this last year was the year that we were successful at attaining the Lytec support for the program. So I wanted to give you some background, uh, on, on the project. Uh, Lytec Low Income Housing Tax Credits, this is money that comes from the federal government through HUD to every state on a per capita basis. And then those funds are administered by a state agency, in this case, the Iowa Finance Authority. Uh, it is a competitive process. The, uh, there were, uh, over 30 applications in 2022 for Lytec projects, and we were one of 11 that were funded. There was a total of $10 million that was funded, uh, at that time. So we felt very fortunate, and we were the only, uh, project funded in southeast Iowa. Background on CBC Financial, the development company, these are some of the projects that, um, we've been involved with over the last 20 years. Um, Garfield Veterans Housing Project in Phoenix, Arizona, was the first project, it was 100 units. Um, and 50% are veterans. There is a second phase that also got a Lytec award this year, so it will be constructed at the same time. Um, Heartland Senior Housing in Fort Dodge, which was a rehabilitation project of a historic building, uh, 48 units. And then in Fairfield, the old Loudon Machinery Original Building, again, a historic project, but 44 units of, um, of apartments in there, low in, it was kind of a mix of market rate and low income. And the, um, that particular project received the 2022 Iowa Housing, uh, Award for Innovative Housing and Initiative. The project scope, uh, Zach has already mentioned 30 units, 20 at Asbury, 10 at Sherwood. There'll be four buildings at Asbury, two buildings, uh, at Sherwood. There'll be two-story town home design. In total, there'll be 18 four-bedroom, two-bath, uh, units, two, uh, eight two-bedroom, one bath, and four one-bedroom, one bath, uh, with pretty generous square footage for all of those. Uh, there'll be a rental office building at Asbury, and each, uh, area will have a pergola and picnic, uh, area for both sites, along with playground equipment. Uh, this is, uh, site plan for Sherwood. So Sherwood also, on the left side of the slide coming up, heading west, uh, you see the Jade Palace, uh, in the middle of that other section. So there'll be a new road that'll build, be built in. Uh, there is contiguous property, it's about two acres that we own as well for hopeful future development. So there will be road going through to that section. And, um, the buildings themselves, we'll get you some pictures in just a second, but you can see there are five, uh, units. The, in each of the buildings, the middle units are two-story and four-bedroom. And on this site, on the Sherwood site, uh, the two end units will be one-bedroom. On the Asbury site, the two-bedroom, uh, the, the end units will be two-bedroom. Oh, sorry, go back one here. So this is, um, an illustration of the front of them. You'll see that each town home has a separate recessed, uh, entrance, uh, to it as well. And you'll see the three sections on top indicating the, uh, there are three bedrooms on the top floors and one bedroom on the bottom floor. And then, uh, this is a one-bedroom unit, so there's the one-bedroom on either side. And that's the rear of the building, side of the building. And then this is a site plan for Asbury. Asbury, again, is here on the, on the left side, entering in from the south. If you know that lot, it is sort of set behind, uh, a lot of the homes that are, that are on Asbury. So there's, it's almost like an oasis, but it's a great building site, two and a half acres. So it goes in, and again, there are four, the, you'll see the first structure on the left is the office rental building, and then the other four buildings are identical with three, four-bedroom units in the middle, uh, flanked by two two-bedroom units on the sides. It's the rear side of the building. Uh, this is just kind of a cutaway of what the exterior is going to be. Architectural composite shingles, um, on the roof. The upper story will be a cement board, uh, likely paintable or colored cement board. And then the, uh, lower portion will be brick, and that'll, those will be full brick, not a brick veneer. Uh, the apartments themselves, as I mentioned, separate recessed front entrances. They'll have double-wall separation for sound and fire pre, uh, prevention. So between each unit, they will be, um, quite independent. Uh, Energy Star Appliances, uh, the kitchen will be stove, cooktop, refrigerator, dishwasher, microwave. There'll be washer and dryer in each unit, ceiling fans, central air, gas heat. Uh, the flooring will be a mix of wood laminate, carpet, and vinyl. Uh, each unit will have its own storage, and, uh, the rear entrance will have a pad, as you saw in the illustrations. Uh, this is again just a, another look at, uh, the floor plan. It's not legible from that distance, but anyway, you get the idea, and that's, uh, kind of an upper floor showing, um, bedrooms. Uh, this, the history and status, um, the land purchases were made in 2016 for Asbury and 2022 Sherwood. The Lytec award was just this past, uh, August of 2022. Uh, we've secured an investor partner that purchases the tax credits that, uh, we receive and have rights to. That is Affordable Housing Partners, who has partnered with us on other projects. This is a division of Berkshire Hathaway. Uh, the lender will be Horizon Bank, who are both construction and permanent financing. Uh, Area 15 Regional Housing Trust Fund, uh, has granted us a loan of $260,000 of permanent financing over a 20-year period. Uh, Atomo Housing Authority, um, is awarding 15 project vouchers to the project as well, it's half of the units. Um, site plans have been approved, architectural drawings are complete, environmental, geotechnical, uh, all of the work is, is going on. We had a, we will have a closing on all of these different elements, uh, sometime in the first week of May, um, but we really are quite geared up for construction at this point. Contractors, Hackett Construction, the architect, Monty Stock, um, and as I've mentioned, the clo, the closing is scheduled for the end of April, and construction hopefully to begin, uh, in mid-May. I'll give you an idea of what some of the rents will be. So through the Lytec program, um, application, you're essentially putting together a mix of rents that will essentially be, um, 40% to 60% of the area median income. So this is a calculation that is done through HUD, and actually, the Atomo Housing Authority will pass on those, uh, numbers to us as well. But the max rents represent that, that, uh, for this program and this type of housing, those are the maximum rents that can be charged. But as you can see, at, at those levels, for a one-bedroom, a 40%, uh, would be $425. A two-bedroom would be 500, and a four-bedroom would be $600. So quite affordable, um, and really does fit the, the mix of housing that is articulated in the studies that you've done. Uh, this is a slide on the, um, kind of the, the sources of revenue that we have for the project thus far. Um, the, our partner, Affordable Housing Partners, will be doing about $9 million. Will be borrowing permanently $900,000 from Horizon Bank, $260,000 from Area 15. Uh, the developer is also loaning the project money as well. And the gap that we had, that we've been in discussions with the city on, is the $186,000. And when we first started the discussion, we started the discussion, um, around TIF, and this was essentially the net value of what we would be able to borrow into the project if you were to go that direction. But I think you've wisely chosen a different direction, not to tie up taxpayer dollars, and, um, this will return money to the city, uh, as soon as it is built and on the tax rolls. So for your support and partnership, um, we see that we have an opportunity to provide new affordable housing, identified as needed in the recent City of Atomo Legacy Foundation Housing Study. Adding 92 beds and 30 rental units to the city housing options. It is infill development within walking distance of public transportation and shopping. It's supported by the Atomo Housing Authority and Area 15 Regional Housing Trust Fund. It meets the strategic goals of, uh, of the housing study, specifically with two of the goals, provide incentives for medium-density infill development and gap financing to address gaps between costs and values. So I know I ran through that kind of quickly, but, um, would be happy to take, uh, any questions, but we would certainly, um, love to have your partnership in this, uh, development.
Does council have any questions?
I guess I'll start. I, I've seen this presentation in some forum or another a few times, so, um, just a couple of quick questions. Um, one of the questions, uh, I guess, first of all, I'm glad to finally see this getting launched.
Yeah, we're here.
It's been a long time coming, so, but, um, just to rehash some of the questions, and I know, that I know that I've personally asked in the past. And you, I think that you said it, I just want to make sure, this is all LMI housing, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
100%, yes. You can act, yeah, you could probably access our application online, uh, possibly to, to see that, but yes, that's, that's our pledge.
Okay. And one of the questions that I, at one point, uh, was kind of deflected a, a little bit, uh, the last presentation that was made a couple of years ago, or whenever it was, uh, a concern from several of the neighbors, uh, over the course of the, the couple of times that this was presented, was the ongoing maintenance of those buildings. And, uh, they, they specifically had pointed out a couple other properties that was owned by this group that the, uh, the history of maintenance on the outside wasn't the best. So is that something that's built into this to ensure that, um, that the, the exterior look is going to, uh, be a good addition to the neighborhoods that they're going to be in?
Right. I'm definitely with the first presentation, my partner Jim probably would have given that, and I think he probably did that at a time, uh, prior to, uh, an application being submitted. So what, and I believe it was a four-story project.
I think that's correct, yeah.
So this is town home. Um, honestly, this is the first time we're developing this product, uh, so it will be new. But the requirements from IFA, um, for the, the first floor being, uh, brick, full brick, and then the upper story being cement board, which has, you know, a, a great long life. Um, I, I think, you know, we, we essentially have, uh, management companies that take care of the ongoing management of it. But I don't, I'm not aware of, of any complaints that, uh, that have been received in the past for past properties. But, but again, this is a new build. Uh, the properties that we do have in Iowa were rehabs of historic buildings. So this would be a little bit different, and yes, I agree, there would probably be a little bit more maintenance, but that is, that is part of it.
But, and you also have an office on-site, correct?
We'll have, yes, we'll have an office on-site.
And then the last question that I have, and maybe this is more geared towards Zach than, than you. Um, one of the questions that has come up consistently, and maybe unfairly for this particular property, but it's been a question that's come up, uh, pretty much every time, uh, a construction project, uh, has been, uh, uh, presented to the city council specifically around LMI properties. I know we had that, the housing study done, this is definitely going to fill a gap. But just again, to ask the question, um, at what point are we going to, and this is theoretical probably, but at what point are we going to, as a city, say, "Okay, we have enough LMI housing in the community, um, we can start diverting some of that city support on projects to more market-rate products"?
Yeah, um, so that's a really good question, and there's kind of a few, uh, ways to start answering it. The first is, oh, uh, the first is that, uh, the incentives are really geared around, especially when we're talking about the largest incentives at the state level, are geared around the LMI. Uh, and so that presents sort of the more lower-hanging fruit. When we talk about, uh, even the powers that we have with TIF, uh, low income, uh, low-to-moderate income allows us to do projects anywhere in the city as opposed to just blank, uh, remediation-type areas. So, uh, there's a lot more, uh, power, a lot more access to funds that comes around the LMI, so it's naturally a starting point. Um, it's also where, uh, folks that are dealing with the sort of worst parts of the shortage are feeling it most acutely because they're the folks that have the least amount of money. Uh, and so that again is probably why it's a good starting point. Uh, but it's also not, uh, being neglected in the other area. We've, uh, completed seven new homes, uh, six or seven new homes last year, and we're, have at least six or seven new single-family homes in progress right now, uh, in Atomo. And we're also looking at, uh, market rate, um, rents being charged at the Bonita Project. Now, they happen to also be within that 80% LMI because our market rate is within about 60% of L, or 80% of LMI. Um, but we do have some options coming onboard in that direction as well. Apartments downtown that are gonna be market rate, um, a lot of different choice coming in that area. Uh, we also do have direct wired incentives, the $10,000 to complete a new single-family home. Uh, we still have, uh, funding available for at least 24 of those projects, uh, 22 or 24 of those projects. Um, but, uh, I guess all that's to say is that we are working diligently in the direction of the market rate as well as the affordable. Uh, but the affordable-type projects, uh, do have more, uh, levers, they have larger incentives. They also have instruments that require us to come to the council, so you're gonna see more of them than you will the, uh, market-rate things, just because the market-rate things can kind of be built on their own by right with the programs we've already approved.
Well, and, and I'm not, um, I'm not dismissing any of that. And I just, you know, from a, from a financing perspective, we, we do have, and the housing study, uh, showed that, that we have a pretty wide mix of, of housing needs here. So, um, when we're talking about the, the city funding, I just want to make sure that we're not lopsided, lopsided on, uh, pushing more money towards L, LMI housing, even though there is a, a need for it, obviously, um, than we would be for the market-rate housing that there's obviously a need for as well. So I just, um, I, I want to make sure that, uh, we're managing both of those, uh, in the light that they need to be managed. And so, I understand we have some grant money that's, that's being given here, but, uh, being judicious about that at the same time.
Absolutely.
Um, so first off, to clarify, LMI, low?
To moderate income.
Low, okay, just low to moderate income. I just want to make sure that we don't just, we clarify for everyone. Um, the other, my other question too, is this, um, tax credit, is this one where after so many years, um, it has to be low income for so many years, and then it can go to, uh, market rate, too?
Yeah, so there is a compliance period, is it 30? 15, 15 years, uh, compliance period, and then the units could change, um, could change ownership, they could change, uh, types of rents, all those sorts of things.
Thank you. Wait, I do have one more question. Um, so on the, you kind of touched on it, um, the material, um, progress. Again, um, I know that you said it's really hard to identify, that's for that second payment. Um, it's a, hard to identify what that means, but who assesses that? Do we, as the city, do you assess that, who assesses that if that progress has been made?
Yeah, so I think that, um, if it comes January 1 next year, uh, and me, my office, Phil, uh, gets the sense that we don't think that it'd be appropriate to make the payment, that we'd say the project is probably stopped, then we would need to have had quite a few conversations already with the developer. Um, but in order for us to probably exercise any- But in order for us to probably exercise any of those provisions to say there's default, there's anything else, there's remedies in the development agreement that we would use, everyone would be served, we'd have a kind of an open conversation, and it would involve the council.
Thank you, and then I just have one more final comment. I really appreciate this, this presentation that you did, it was very concise, it was very easy for us to follow, and it really provided us with the information that we need to be able to make this decision, so I just, I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Does any other council members have any other questions? Does anyone in the audience have any questions regarding the Asbury Project? You want to come up to the microphone and state your name and address, please?
My name is Jasper Torres, five four five Ray Street. I just want to know what's the square footage in between both projects?
There's a square footage per unit. And each of the buildings is about six thousand square feet or just a little over six thousand square feet, so there are six buildings.
Anyone else have any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number sixty-four, twenty twenty-three, approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement by and between the City of Atumwa and Asbury Manager LLC. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number sixty-four, twenty twenty-three.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property located at two twenty-six South Ward Street to Mahaska Communications Group.
I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing, and Zach, I believe you're going to present on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mahaska Communications Group submitted a application to purchase city-owned property at two twenty-six South Ward per the vacant lot policy. They did bid the minimum five hundred dollars for this lot. The developer intends to use the lot to place equipment that would be for a broadband utility project. A copy of the application was included in the packet. MCG also purchased a lot on Jefferson either earlier in the year or late last year for the same purpose. They'll be building out broadband to the home throughout the community.
Does Council have any questions for Zach?
You stressed that they bid the minimum, do you think that that's what the property is worth?
I think that for the value of the project and also, you know, according to the policy, that that's definitely around what it's probably worth. It'll also be good to not have to mow it and maintain it.
Okay, thank you.
Was this a residential property that needed any kind of zoning change or anything?
It doesn't require any zoning change for this type of use. It is a residential property, and there was previously a home that was demolished under the Derelict Property Program.
Council have any other questions? Does anyone in the audience have any questions they'd like to present? If not, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number sixty-five, twenty twenty-three, accepting the offer and approving the disposal of city-owned property located at two twenty-six South Ward to Mahaska Communications Group for the sum of five hundred dollars in order to build enclosure for fiber build. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number sixty-five, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the disposition of city-owned property located at three twenty-eight South Ward Street.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Zach, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, this one's just a block down the road. The city owns the property at three twenty-eight South Ward, Rippling Waters submitted an application to purchase that property again under the vacant lot policy. To be fair with my emphasis, they also bid the minimum, which for this case for a nonprofit is a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and they'll use the lot to construct a single-family home using the Homes for Iowa program.
Council have any questions for Zach?
Well, I guess it would be fair for me to say, is this worth the minimum?
Yes, yeah, I think that the value we'll get over time from the home will be worth it.
Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions they'd like to present? Any other questions from Council? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number sixty-six, twenty twenty-three, accepting the offer and approving the disposal of city-owned property located at three twenty-eight South Ward to Rippling Waters for the sum of one hundred and twenty-five dollars in order to build a single-family dwelling. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number sixty-six, twenty twenty-three.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre? Campground sewer dump fee increase. Recommendation, approve the increase in the sewer dump fee for the Atumwa Park Campground from three dollars to five dollars.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Gene, I believe you're going to cover this.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The new campground hosts have indicated that the sewer dump fee at the Atumwa Park Campground is low compared to other campgrounds that they have worked at. They suggested raising the fee from the current three dollars to five dollars. With the new sewer dump station coming online this summer, this is an opportunity to generate more revenue for the campground. This fee increase was approved by the Atumwa Parks Advisory Board at their meeting on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Does Council have any questions for Gene?
When you say that they have seen higher rates elsewhere, what are the average rates they're seeing elsewhere?
They're seeing a pretty much standard five dollars at every campground they've been to, and I think they've worked at like nineteen other campgrounds, and they've camped a lot also, but they're seeing five dollars at just about every other campground that they've been to.
Okay, thank you.
Have we done any research on this to figure out if maybe those, because they've been here for a year or so, haven't they? This couple, have they been our campground for a couple of years?
No, they just started this spring.
Okay, so did we research other campgrounds to find out if maybe they're higher than this, or are we just going off of what they told us?
I'm going by their recommendation, and I realize this is a fairly small amount of revenue, but.
Right, sorry, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Gene? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Replacement of a load-out pump for water pollution control facility. Recommendation, approve the replacement of Hydromatic sixty RDP pump for the water pollution control facility in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and five dollars.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Seals.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is one of two pumps that's used to transfer material from the sludge conditioning tanks to either load out or to the biopress. It's wore out and is time to replace it.
Council have any questions for Larry? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Rochester Station Fairbanks Vertical Solids Handling Pump Replacement for Water Pollution Control Facility. Recommendation, approve the Rochester Station Fairbanks Pump Replacement for Water Pollution Control Facility in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Larry.
This is to replace one of two Rochester Station lift pumps. A pump was installed in the lift station in nineteen seventy-five. Pump cost is fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and it comes with a one-year warranty.
Council have any questions for Larry? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number seventy, twenty twenty-three, awarding the contract for Atumwa Campground Parking Lot and RV Dump Station to RG Construction Incorporated of Atumwa, Iowa in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number seventy, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Gene?
The City of Atumwa received one bid for the campground, showerhouse, sewer dump station, and parking lot project from RG Construction for one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. This project is scheduled to be completed by July thirty-first. There is three hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds budgeted for this project and also a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Waplo County Foundation. The sewer dump station was a requirement of the Waplo County Foundation grant. The engineer's cost estimate for this project was fifty-two thousand.
Does Council have any questions for Gene? I'm just curious, why did the Waplo County Foundation require a sewer dump station?
There are some campers on their board, and they discussed this thoroughly, and they decided that since we're going to build a new shower house, they would like to see a new sewer dump also because our current sewer dump is in a very tight spot, and it was built so long ago that it doesn't accommodate the larger RVs that people drive nowadays. So they wanted to see an all-new dump station as part of this project.
Probably makes sense. Any other questions for Gene? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Resolution number seventy-one, twenty twenty-three, approving the agreement between the City of Atumwa and Calhoun Burns and Associates Incorporated for professional engineering services to conduct the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial bridge inspections. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number seventy-one, twenty twenty-three.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Larry.
Iowa Department of Transportation requires that all bridges be inspected every two years. These requirements must be met to be in compliance with the IODOT inspection program and qualify for the highway bridge program funding. The scope of the work includes routine inspection of eleven vehicle bridges, two pedestrian bridges within the City of Atumwa, updates of load rating calculations if necessary, and updates of the scour evaluation if necessary. All work will be in accordance with the Iowa Department of Transportation and Federal Highway Administration guidelines and requirements. The compensation is as follows. The two thousand twenty-three lump sum of nineteen thousand, nine hundred, that's for three bridges for a visual hand-on. Jefferson is one of those that they have to actually get in the Snoopert truck and do a hands-on, takes usually four to five days to get that part of the work done. And then in two thousand twenty-four lump sum of forty-four hundred and fifty dollars, that's for the smaller bridges over the Jefferson Drainage Ditch and the two pedestrian bridges, one at Eisenhower and one at Kettle Creek. And then we listed some of the other requirements. We listed the hourly bill rate if they exceed or need to do additional work, and then broke out their inspection fees along with the equipment. The eighteen thousand, five hundred is for the Snoopert truck. It is a specialized piece of equipment that they have to schedule several months ahead of time in order to be able to get it to do the Jefferson Street Bridge. The total for this contract is forty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty, plus the hourly bridges billing if needed. Source of funds is fifty thousand in the road use.
Council have any questions for Larry?
Larry, somewhat related, somewhat not. The Jefferson, excuse me, the Viaduct, I remember the last time there was work done to that bridge. It was stated that we're going to come to end of life at that here at some point in the near future. Is that still a topic of conversation between your department and DOT? That that will hit end-of-life cycle here at some point in the near future?
Well, as far as how that would be funded underneath the HBP program, they did raise the cap available to us. It's one and a half million. You're looking at a bridge and today's new construction cost could easily be twenty-five million. So that's going to be either a direct appropriations if possible, or for a portion if they exist at the time we need it, and then local funding, which would be a fairly strong bond issue in order to replace that bridge. That's kind of a moving target on the number of years left. I think we probably at year nine, by six, seven years from now, we'll have to really start looking at that. And that doesn't mean that at year six, something couldn't happen and really derate that bridge. As you've noticed over the years, we continue to reduce the load capacity of the bridge. That's to extend the life, there will be a point that it'll become functionally obsolete, and hopefully we've got things arranged ahead of time from a design standpoint, letting standpoint, and funding standpoint.
Okay, so since we are, it sounds like we're within a decade, maybe?
That's the estimate currently.
Okay, has the conversation started, at least, in concept at this point of what that end game could be for how we move forward with, either without that bridge or with a replacement for the bridge?
We have started the initial talks, we've looked at different design options. You would reduce the span, if you look at that, it's considerable. You would do as much at grade or on bank as possible. So we have talked about it, it ended up being a couple different structures. We have talked, generally speaking, Phil and myself, on pending finance needs for that bridge.
And how would that affect some of the reconstruction of the streets that have already been done off of like Main Street?
Wouldn't affect them, your landing would be the same on the north side.
Okay, but if we went for a flat bridge replacement as an example, how would that affect the south side of that? Since it is arching over like the ball fields and the levee on the south side of the bridge?
We've had general discussions, there's a couple options to get into that area if they still exist at that time and haven't been relocated. There would be most likely reinforced concrete boxes instead of a bridge. You'd have a dual tunnel system if you want to maintain access from the bridge view side into that area, or do you come from the other way and come off a vine? That would probably be a healthy discussion and probably have a lot of influence by what is the cost difference to do these different options.
Okay, thanks, like I said, I know it's a little bit off topic, but.
It's in discussion because it's such a large project.
Any other questions for Larry? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is where I ask if anyone has any agenda items that they'd like to bring to the Council's attention that's not on our agenda tonight. Any topics at all?
If I can step outside of my official role. Sure. I'm gonna step outside of my official role as city administrator and play proud father for a moment here and invite, invite Council, citizens, staff, whoever is around this weekend to the musical that the high school is putting on. It is a world premiere, and I know this, it has never been done anywhere else because my son wrote it and composed it and did all of that. So it is actually a very fun show, it's got good music, and if you are able to make it, Friday night, seven o'clock, Saturday night, seven o'clock, Saturday matinee at two, Sunday matinee at two, any of those shows, you can get tickets at the door, or I think there's a website. Any of those shows, you can get tickets at the door, or there's a website that you can go to to get those as well. So, yeah.
The OHS Auditorium.
At the OHS Auditorium. And Friday night, I believe there's a reception if you're there for that show that night. So definitely go out and check it out, and I think you'll have a good time.
What's the name of this?
The name of the musical is called 11 O'Clock.
Rotary got a little bit of a preview on Monday, and I'm just telling you, it was fantastic, so I hope people will go and see it.
Just don't show up at 11 o'clock.
Yeah, you'll miss it then.
11 o'clock somewhere.
Does anyone have any other items they'd like to bring up that's not on our agenda? Do you want to come up to the microphone and state your name and address again, please?
Hi, good afternoon. Jasvir Torres, 545 Ray Street. All right. Let me open my phone. And sorry, I haven't been here. I've been really busy, but I'm not annoying you guys, but my couple of questions is for housing. My first thing is the word, I keep hearing the word, low-income families. What do you, Mr. Zach, refer to low-income families? And why would you say there's low-income families?
I don't know if it's appropriate to go into a back-and-forth here. If you have questions for staff, you could...
The question, the reason, I mean, I'm not trying to waste your time. The thing is, as a person that came and grew up in housing, my concern is that we're starting, I'm starting to see, because I live in town, I'm starting to see this town turning into a housing project. And I have nothing against low income, because I am a low-income family person. The thing is that kind of rings my bell as well is that there's more housing being built than actual houses to sell. Now, in low income, I understand there is people, I mean, as I grew up, my mom broke her back, you know, and have dad. It was hard, but as an adult, you know, I feel like I pay my dues, so I work. I like to contribute what the government contributed to my, into my life at that point. Now, my thing is, they say low-income families, but you turn around and everybody's hiring. I hear that the city needs help cleaning up like the tumble clean, but I don't see anybody lining up to come and help. Now, I understand, and it's a great humane thing to help others, because I help as many people as I can. But there's one thing, it's helping and the other one's giving away. Now, I'm not saying that that's what it is. Like I told you guys when I came the first time here, I'm not a high school graduate. I didn't get a degree in college, but as I've been growing and maturing, I feel like I've grown a little common sense. And honestly, I'm not, and I'm not saying by far you have, it's just, I don't know how to express my words, but I honestly feel that, like I told you at the beginning, this town has so much potential. When I got here, it was amazing, but slowly I see it turning into what society's turning into, and that's pretty much giving everything away. Now, what are we teaching our children?
I guess I would like to just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, there's a few things that you said that I'd really like to address and maybe dispel. The first thing is the definition of low-income housing. That's not something that Mr. Simonson or Mr. Malloy or anybody around this chamber made. That is a federal guideline. Those numbers are by definition of federal, so that's not a word that's thrown or a term that's thrown around lightly. But more specific to some of the things that you're saying, I have to say, in looking at data, I very much disagree with what you're saying about people not lining up for jobs. Looking at the data for Waplo County specifically, I would say we do have an inordinate amount of open jobs. We also have an inordinate amount of people that are not trained for the jobs that are available, and we also don't have the number of people to fill those roles. Just looking from a mathematical standpoint, we have about 900 and some open jobs in the community right now. We have about 300 people actively looking. Most of those jobs in the community are specialized in some way, shape, or form that even if we did have 900 people to fill those roles, they still wouldn't be able to get those jobs because they're not specialized in those areas. So I think it's an unfair statement to say that anybody in the community is not actively looking, and I also disagree that there's a downhill slide in the community. I would argue just the opposite. I would say that over the last three to four years, we've actually seen a progression in the economy. We've seen a progression in service provision in the community, so I just want to point those things out, and I would be more than happy to, sorry, my computer's dying, I would be more than happy to share the data points to prove everything that I'm saying. That isn't just general talking points. That's not my perception. People like to look at perception a lot in this community. That's been a common problem here over the last three, four decades at least, where people keep saying, you know, this is just a dirty river town, the town's dying, people don't care in the community, when, to your point of volunteerism, people helping out, we probably, per capita, I would say, have one of the higher volunteer rates in the state of Iowa. So I think it's an unfair assumption to say that our community's on a downhill slide, because I would argue just the opposite, and the data's there to prove that.
And I'm going to piggyback off that really quick, too, before we go on low income. Also, I mean, there's stigma around it, and it doesn't necessarily mean people who are low income, we have, like the Bonita houses are working class, but they fall into the low-income definition. So really, and the last time we had this conversation about the, about different types of apartments, we've stressed that again because of perception again, like Councilperson Rowe is talking about. Also, you know, actually, I'm just going to revert to what Councilperson Rowe said. I don't need to...
You go ahead, no, because I'm learning. I want to learn, and I want to listen.
I mean, I'm willing to have a conversation with you outside of tonight. I think that's probably the more appropriate setting. I do work with that population, and I can, we can have conversations about statistics and all that, and I think that'd probably be a more appropriate setting than tonight.
And the reason I'm saying this, and I'm bringing this up, it's not to upset anybody, but it's, and I respect 100% your view of your charts, but when I stop and we, and contractors, not only contractors, but there are other people that are at work, we're having a hard trouble, a hard time trying to find people. And we, it's not like we're paying 15, we're 25, okay? And I don't know, I don't know if I'm doing right being, doing this or whatnot, but I think that there's a lot of things here that could be, I don't know, just, I think the money that the town has could be used to uplift the town. I mean, I see it, I live in it, I know you live in it, too. I don't know what part of town you live in, and it doesn't matter, but I think what I see, because I'm all over the town all the time, is that. And building more housing, my kid, my kid is in junior high, my daughter, and for them to be speaking like politics and stuff like that, it just amazes me, because at that time I was just watching cartoons. But, you know, it's just been getting more into where economics, politics has gone into my family, where that's why I'm coming here to learn. And like you said, you have charts, you have charts and, what did you say? Sorry, I'm bad with that terminology.
Data.
You're what?
Data.
You're data, yeah, you're data. But I don't speak to the data and daily basis, I speak to people. And what people tell me is what I hear and what I relate. And data's very good. I don't, I'm not saying it's not, but I think I would just want to, you know, bring that up a little bit, and I mean, and it's good for Zach, and I appreciate that thought, because you do think about our community. But I think, as a person, I think we need to make our community more active, too. And go ahead, because I know you were going to talk.
I just want to say, so I'm going to bring the kids in, and this is the last thing I am going to say. So I did a survey of the youth here. I had 900 youth respond to my survey in Waplo County. Their biggest need was safe, stable housing. When we have safe, stable housing, we can break cycles of substance use, child abuse, neglect, all these things that people see in our community that are as these negative things. So we do need safe, stable housing, and we need everyone to have that, too. And I think Councilperson Rowe earlier identified to Zach, we need to look at all areas, and I think that that's really important, too. So kids want to feel safe in their house, they want to feel safe in their neighborhoods, and these are ways we can start to do that.
So my wife drives a school bus, and sometimes they take them in routes. And there was a kid in her bus that needed a bed, so we took it to the person, to the parents, and we went and we ended up at, it's the apartment complex going outside town.
Tap Circle.
Tap Circle, okay. So I 100% agree with you. We need to make these, you know, the youth from these generations a lot better than these back, I mean, I think we, our kids are our future, but my point is, we went and we dropped that table, or that bed, and the family looked kind of scared, and I'm like, are you guys okay? And they said, yeah. And now they're like, well, why, I don't know, I just, with energy, I can, and I was like, what's wrong? And they're like, well, our neighbors are always smoking marijuana, you know, and I don't like my kids, and they're from Marshall East Island. And I'm like, I have nothing against marijuana, that's not the point. The thing is that we want to build something new, but where we have kids and families in what there's already built, the maintenance, as they showed me, is not the best. The, what they, what's going around there, I have no idea, because I don't live there, but just pass and you can smell it. And if, you know, we have the money to buy or build more, why not use some of that money to bring, like you said, they want a safer housing, right? So these kids are afraid to go...
Honorable mayor.
Do I have time? If I don't have time, I'm good.
I appreciate you coming and speaking with us, and going to call point order, because we really have dragged this out a little too long, and I appreciate all your comments. Thank you for being here, and in a better setting, in a more appropriate setting, we can have more conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any communications or announcements that they'd like to make?
Just, go ahead, just go ahead.
A citywide cleanup event, a great opportunity for folks to volunteer Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. You can go to atumwa.us, the city website, click the Make Atumwa Shine button right at the top, choose from one of the properties that's still available to adopt, and if you need to get free bags and gloves to pick that trash up, we'll have them here at City Hall as well as the recycling center, and they will have them at the GOPIB office as well.
And Main Street at Atumwa?
We can bring some to Main Street at Atumwa, too. And then...
It's the whole city.
And you really just need to pick the litter up, let us know on the phone where you left the bags, and we can take care of that part for you. We'll make it as easy as possible, but we want to see some of that litter get picked up this weekend. Probably are going to do it another time, at least this spring, but really excited to see some folks this weekend.
Thank you for bringing that up, Zach, because I was going to talk about that a little bit, so appreciate it. There is a big litter problem in Atumwa, and I've gotten a lot of citizen complaints this spring about the littering that's going on in our town, so I totally like to echo what Zach said. We really encourage all the citizens to come out and help clean up our city this coming weekend, and we need to do a better job in the future of keeping it that way and just not doing it once a year. So hopefully we can have some more of those events throughout the summer and fall, because litter should be something that everybody takes some responsibility for, because it doesn't make our community look good when it's littered and dirty, and we all need to take pride in our community and do our fair share. So thank you for bringing that up.
It does remind me, I do have one question for you, Zach. Are we adding the bulky item cleanup into this this year as well, or is that going to be another time?
So we don't have a date yet, but there will be a free drop-off, just like last year. The trash collection contract does require a cleanup event every year, and so we will do a drop-off, probably again at the Hydro. We'll announce a day, about four hours or six hours of that day, people will be free to come and drop off anything they have.
But it's not this weekend, right?
It will not be this weekend, different day.
Council have any other announcements or anything they'd like to bring to the public's attention? If not, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for attending our Atumwa City Council meeting this evening.